What? Oh, I've not heard nothing about that.
Okay.
Our proposal for the night about the mayor. To be read.
Oh. Okay.
I can tell there's a lot of hope.
Yeah, right.
So Bob Ripson.
I don't know what's going on to be honest. I saw that later. Sunglasses, a sticker and a cool color. Sunglasses. I don't want to read in David's. I feel like we're in exile over here.
Nah.
Okay.
Nah.
I'll send an email out about it, but it's time for Amy's evaluation next month.
Do I get to evaluate too?
Sure.
We call a meeting to order from the Franklin Town Council for this Monday, August the 20th, 2024. And if you would, please stand and join me as Vice Mayor of the company, leads us in the legislative spotlight. Mr. Duffy.
I pledge allegiance to the line of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Member David Culpepper is unable to be here tonight, and we were given notice about that. And so, in order to be fair to Mr. Culpepper, I'd like to ask for a motion for a discussion from tonight's meeting. I move that motion. Is there a second? Motion made, second. Any discussion? Here and not all of those in favor, please signify by raising your hand or raising your hand. Any opposed by the like sign, that motion carries. Mr. Culpepper has excused for tonight's meeting. The other thing I'll mention is that you'll see on our screen, our council member, Ms. Salane, is joining us by video teleconference today. She is here in, through the video conference. And under state law, she can participate in the discussion and give her views on whatever issue comes up. The only problem is by tying into the video conference, the state law does not allow a member to actually vote on any issue coming before the council tonight. So she'll be participating, but she will not be voting on issues that come before the council. So with that said, you do have an agenda, a revised agenda, that everybody, I think, has received. Is there any questions about that? Or is there a motion that the board approved, the adopt the agenda for tonight's meeting? Mr. Lewis moves to approve the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Tompkins seconds. Any discussion? Here and not all of those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Both of you sign. That motion carries. The agenda is adopted. The next thing we have is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that any member of the board would like to pull for further consideration? Or is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I move to.
Mr. Collins moves to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Mr. Duffy, seconds. Any discussion? Here and not all of those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed by the like sign, that motion carries. The consent agenda for tonight's meeting has been approved. The first thing we'd like to do is ask the folks who are here concerning our Help Homeless Veterans Week, if you would, come forward. We would like to read and present this proclamation on behalf of the Town Council. This is something that we've had the opportunity and the pleasure to do over the past several years. And I can tell you from talking to these gentlemen and others in their group, this is not the only people who are involved, but they're here tonight representing the men of the Presbyterian Church. And they do a wonderful job raising money for homeless veterans. And I want to, instead of being messengers in their names, I would like for them to introduce themselves so you all know who they are.
My name's Tom Thag.
Nick Kraft.
And I'm Fred Franklin.
It's good to have you all with us tonight. Now, we have a proclamation we'd like to read. Whereas the town of Franklin proclaims the week of September 8th, 2024, through September 14th, 2024, to be set aside as a week of public support for our homeless veterans, thereby encouraging our citizens to support the efforts to help homeless and distressed veterans. And whereas the efforts of the men's group of the First Presbyterian Church of Franklin have earned the goodwill and positive response from our local merchants, thereby allowing the men's group to place donation collection receptacles in their establishments. And whereas the First Presbyterian Church Men's Group will manage the receptacles and collect the donations received to be used to support ongoing programs for our homeless veterans of Western North Carolina. Now therefore, I, Jack Horton, Mayor, on behalf of the Town Council for the Town of Franklin, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the week of September 8th through 14th as Help Homeless Veterans Week, and commend its observance and encourage our citizens to support the efforts to help our homeless and distressed veterans.
Thanks.
Thank you. Ned, you want to say anything?
No, I just want to thank everybody. Want to thank the town and all those citizens and businesses that have helped us over the years. We've been doing this since 2014. However, Help Homeless Veterans Week, we just started that back in 2018. And but since 2014, we've raised over $65,000 just by asking people for money to help homeless veterans and veterans of D. And last year and this year, also this year, we will be donating everything that we collect to 828 Vets, which is a local veterans organization here in town. And they help veterans all over Macon County and other areas in the 828 area code. So we want to thank you.
Thank you very much, Ned. Thank you all for being here. Veterans issues are a little close to my heart. Our youngest son is a clinical social worker with the Veterans Administration who helps veterans in another part of the state. And he tells me from time to time some of the issues he has to deal with. So I appreciate and applaud all your work and all your efforts to help these veterans. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Can we take this?
You can take that. I've got one that's signed. See you, Tom. Let me see if she has one over here. Have you got one or is it over here?
Yeah.
On my, on my seat. I do.
The one that you just read from.
The one you just read from.
That's the one, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Next item on our agenda is some introductions. And so I'd like to ask our Town Planner, Mr. Justin Sessler, if he would come forward and introduce one of our newest members of our Franklin Town team. Mr. Sessler.
Good evening, Mayor of Town Council. Yes, tonight I'm happy to introduce our new Code Enforcement Officer, Ms. Angela Green. She comes to us from way of other state government agencies, and looks like she's going to be a good fit, working with these code enforcement issues that we deal with in town. And just wanted to introduce Angela here to everybody. Angela, did anything to say here?
I'm very happy to be here and I look forward to serving the community.
Good. Thank you.
Good job.
Good luck to you. I know Ms. Green will do a great job for us, so looking forward to working with her. Now, as Chris Walbrook here, our supervisor. Chris, if you'd come forward and believe you have an introduction that you'd like to make tonight as well.
We do. Mayor of Town Council, tonight I'm going to introduce Andre McDonald. He's our new full-time streets maintenance worker. Andre was with me a couple of years ago, part-time on streets maintenance. So he kind of knew the ins and outs of the job, and then he took a trip over to the water sewer side, decided he wanted to come back to streets and just really enjoys that mowing and weed eating, you know, as odd as it sounds in the summertime, he really has a passion for those kind of things. So he's going to be a tremendous asset. He's a hard worker and not really shy away from anything I get to again. So we're glad to have him with us.
Thank you. Chief Powell.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I would like to introduce to you our new police officer, Joshua Lanzetta. He was actually just sworn in today at 3:00 P.M. by Mayor Horton's. Still one. He comes to us from the same state of Florida. He's lived here a little over a year. His father retired from the Gulf Breeze Police Department there in Panhandle, so he's from an all-for-sense family, so please welcome him to our department and family.
I look forward to meeting everybody and being able to find my job and be able to do my best to serve.
Thank you. I had the pleasure of swearing our new officer in this afternoon at 3:00 P.M. And I told Joshua, they told me when I enlisted in the Navy, when I got ready to raise my hand and put my other hand on the Bible, the chief head office looked at me and said, "Are you sure you want to do this?" He's sure he wants to do this. He'll make a great officer and a great addition to our department. Thank you, Chief.
Did you check his ID? Did you check his ID?
Check his ID. He's wearing it on his belt there.
Age, age.
Oh, it's age?
It's age.
He's actually 23.
Well, you're old enough to be his grandfather. All right, Chief, would you have another promotion that you'd like to make us aware of at this time?
Yes, I do. I'd like to introduce to you Sergeant Justin Rawls. He has been promoted to the Community Traffic and Crime Officer position. He's been with the department since 2019, and he's been a shift sergeant since 2022. And he just started his new position about two weeks ago. And we're excited to have this new position. I think it's going to be beneficial to the town, and he's going to be very instrumental in that capacity.
Thank you, Justin. Appreciate it. Thank you. He's also got other talents. He rescued the mayor one day when the mayor came into the town hall and forgot how to turn the alarm system off, and it went off, and it was raining and blaring and so forth. And he rescued the mayor, who was me at the time, was able to disarm the alarm system. So he does a great job for the folks here, and we appreciate all this service to the town and the citizens here. Thank you very much, Justin. Chief, let me have another promotion that you would like to make us aware of.
I don't know why they put him last. Definitely not out there. I'd like to introduce to you Brandon Hooper. Here's our new Sergeant of Patrol. Hooper has been with us, with our agency, for about a year and a half, and he comes from us from Jackson County, where he was a shift supervisor sergeant over there for many, many years. So he'll fulfill this role very well. So please welcome him to his new position.
Now, our Superintendent of Public Works, Mr. Bill Dale, if you'd come forward. Mr. Dale has a certification that he would like to make us aware of and congratulate our recipient. Mr. Dale.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. These are the types of speeches I like to give. My guys do an excellent job in getting training and certified up. And not only is it a personal achievement, but it's also will help out the town of Franklin with the duties and responsibilities that they undertake at their jobs. And Jason Hopkins, our wastewater ORC, has obtained his grade three pretreatment specialty license. And these are very hard to get, and I'm really proud of him for getting it and achieving it.
Thank you. Mr. Dale, I believe you have another.
We all know this guy, Mr. Aaron Fassler. This was a, this certification that he has obtained is in the meter reading area of his job. And he undertook the meter reading position, and with that, he needed to obtain this certification. And we're really pleased and happy with him that he was able to go sit through the class, take the test and pass. So he is now a certified meter reader technician. And hopefully that will help in a lot of different meter applications, but I'm really proud that he was able to do that and undertake it and pass it for us. Thank you.
Congratulations. I'd like to recognize our Town Manager. Mr. Dale, don't go anywhere.
So I am very pleased to be able to present this certification for utility management to Bill Dale. It's through the National Rural Water Association, and they're dedicated to small and rural systems. So it's really important to know that there's organizations out there that are looking out for the smaller systems that we have here and know that they're paying attention. So what this credential actually does is acknowledges Bill's expertise in maintaining water and wastewater utilities. There's five steps to becoming the highly credentialed utility management certification. This is Bill's second step. He has continuing education requirements over the next three years to get to step three. After 15 years total, he is considered a master utility manager. So we're hoping that he'll hang around with us for that, because you know, Bill's been with us 20 years. So there you go. So as this is a certification that we're very proud of you for, he will serve as a resource for the National Rural Water Association for new managers in water and wastewater, as well as to help utility apprentices out. So we're going to come in.
Man gets paid to get a tan.
Would you please join our Town Manager?
She's going to hide behind me. So Sarah, of course, has been with the town for eight years. She's been finance director for four years of that. The North Carolina Certified Local Government Budget Officer Certification, say that three times fast, is a collaboration between the Office of State Budget Management and UNC School of Government. The designation required that Sarah have a bachelor's degree as well as five years experience in an accounting position. And she had to successfully complete nine courses as well as three written exams to get this certification. The exams are only offered every two years, and she has to do 100 hours of continuing education within the next five years to recertify. So not an easy thing to obtain. There's four areas that this certification addresses: budgeting, capital financing, performance management, and evaluation. And she's been working on this designation since 2018. So this is definitely a fantastic big deal. There's not very many certified budget officers in the state, so we are extremely proud of Sarah and her achievements. So I'm going to bring her around front of you, and she definitely will.
And all that training and experience has shown its benefits to the town of Franklin, because we've got probably one of the best finance departments of any municipality our size in the state. Budgets done, reports are made on time, audits are completed, and we don't spend any more money than we have to. So thank you, sir. Congratulations.
And what I'd like to conclude with is just that both Bill and Sarah are an example to those individuals that they supervise, that just because you're the department director doesn't mean you've reached your pinnacle, that it's important that you continue to go to these classes, to receive these certifications, to keep up with new technologies and trends. It's not just about promoting the departments. It's about showing and leading by example, and they are definitely committed to their departments. They're leaders in the organization, and they make Franklin better every day.
Thank you, Ms. Owens. As most people know, leadership, example starts at top, and you do a terrific job bringing your staff along. We appreciate what you've done and what the staff has done and the recognition that they deserve for working so hard and being dedicated employees of the town of Franklin. So thank you all. At this time, we'll go to item six on our agenda, which is public session. If you've signed up to speak in public session, and if you didn't sign up to speak in public session and still want to, after we get through the list, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. First person we have signed up to speak for public comment tonight is Mr. Dave Land. Dave, you can introduce those with you as well.
Well, we have the 80's Flashback, here's members of the 80's Flashback Committee, we're a 513C, they could benefit this group, both shrines, all for children. First off, we have the President, Mr. Tracy Griffin, Advisor Joe Griffin, and the Mouth of the South, George John, you know, the MC's everything, and also is our Treasurer, Vice President, two of the organization. We just want to come out tonight and tell you all thank you for lending us a post-80's Flashback Weekend downtown. I saw many of y'all, Stacy, Robbie, saw you down there. Stacy, we saw you twice. And Joe, we gave you the, like the movie Pig, baby, give him a little nod. I guess I mean, good job. It's a good job, Dave. But no, thank you all so much. We just wanted to say, it was great. We're tolling our numbers. We're looking better than we ever thought. Caleb from Montreal came down and loved every minute of it. He, his mom today said that our streets are better than Montreal's. So that makes us feel good, too. So we have a cleaner, we have a cleaner area than Montreal. But overall, in general, everybody's had a blast. I hadn't even heard no complaints at all from the visitors. They love the area and looking forward to 2025, and we're hoping to have your blessings next year for 2025.
Dave, if you would, take just a moment to let folks know what the purpose of that is and how the money is being used.
The purpose of the money is raised this weekend. It goes to the Greenville Shrine Hospital for Children, where we have 25 patients here in Macon County just this past year. But overall, in general, we've had since 1927, over 127 patients for Macon County. And that's who the money goes to, 100%. There's nobody else to know, is that the director or nothing like that? 100% just goes straight to the hospital. We'll be presenting the check next in September. So if you guys want to go down and tag along, look at the hospital and see what it's benefiting, please come. But I just wanted Tracy to do a little.
Why did you choose?
Sorry. So the reason I, as Joe mentioned, the reason I chose the Greenville Shrine Hospital for Children is because I'm a former patient of the Greenville Shrine Hospital for Children and Tampa Hospital. With my mild cerebral palsy on my left arm and left leg, I chose the Greenville Hospital because that's where my journey began to become handicapped. And because of their, their will and everything, too, and helping me out and blessings of God, I was able to break through so many barriers with physical challenge. And then that's why I decided when I moved up here that I wanted to get back, and this committee was so strong of helping me develop. We went from 53 people the first year we ever hosted this 80's Flashback Weekend to I don't know how many people this weekend, though. Joe, what do you think, Joe? Come on, Joe, come on. Be truthful, Joe, come on.
Thousands.
There you go. That's all we're, Joe.
How much money did you raise the first year compared to last year?
Good point, because the first year, 10 years ago, me and my wife raised $500. And this past year, we did 27, and we're probably going to do 27,000 dollars. This year, we're probably going to do a lot more than we expected. So we're still getting donations in left and right, but overall, in general, it was a blast. The fans were amazed by the citizens of the town and also the merchants on Main Street took so good care of all the visitors. But I think Ginger wants to say, I mean, Tracy wants to say something to y'all.
They call, my friends call me Ginger, that's why I call Ginger. I just wanted to personally and as a committee and board, thank a few people from the town. The Franklin Police Department, both on duty, and we had some off-duty officers helping us with IDing people before they were able to purchase social district cups. They were wonderful. They also helped us a lot with closing streets, getting cones set up where they needed to be. They were very, very gracious and very helpful. Gio, I don't know Gio's last name, he was amazing. He was so much fun. He worked so hard, and he was there both nights, and he was, he was great. Loved him. So yeah, he was there later than some of us, and we were there pretty late cleaning up. Stacy Duffy, Vice Mayor, thank you very much for your speaking both nights. The Franklin Fire Department has been very helpful in helping us raise our funds as well. And Amy, want to thank you. You've been a great friend through it all, too. It's been a lot. I'm like overwhelmed still and exhausted, but so grateful for all the help and thank you all for your support.
For nine years, I was doing this by myself. I mean, me and my wife were doing it for nine years. And so when these guys approached me and said, "We want to help out," and so we went to a different, I said, "Okay," and then gave it a chance. And this is the first year ever I was able to sit back and enjoy the celebration, too. And so that was amazing. I was overwhelmed to see how many people came out. There's a lot of familiar faces, but there also was a lot of people. We had one guy said he drove six hours because he saw it two years ago and wanted to come back every year. So his family said, "We make our vacation in Ohio, from Ohio to here every year."
There was a guy from Texas. There was a guy from Texas came up to me and wanted Dave's autograph. This is, I think, his fourth year, and he comes from Texas every year and will continue.
But we want to thank you all for allowing us to do it, and we look forward and hope that you give your blessings for next year.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, can I say one?
You please, yeah, you sure can, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I appreciate you all coming to thank us, but I'd like to say we thank you, to you, for doing this and for choosing to do it in Franklin, because it's one, now one of the biggest events that we have in Franklin. Also, we're doing it on Town Square this year, because, man, that, that made all the difference in the world, the way people could spread out, interact with each other, and thank you for what you do for the Shrine Hospital, it makes me really proud. And I kept saying this week that it shows that we've got a small town, we've got to pay it hard. Thank you. Thanks.
Yes. Thank you all. Did anyone else come in who did not get a chance to sign up to speak in public session? If not, then we will close public session and move to the next item on our agenda. Under new business, we have a request for approval for an updated N'Kwasi mound plan. Mr. Bob McCullough, McCullough is here from the N'Kwasi Initiative. Mr. McCullough.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Horton, Council. I'm trying to forgive this little time on the agenda tonight. My name's Bob McCullough, and I'm the vice chair of the N'Kwasi Initiative for Cherokee N'kwashi Initiative. And so let me introduce who I've got here with me tonight. Our executive director, Elaine Eisenbrom. We have Nancy Taylor, Representative of Cherokee Nation, and we have Gina Myers, which is a new employee. She's project coordinator for N'Kwashi, N'kwashi Initiative, and a member of EBCI. The town of Franklin, of course, is one of the four primary partners in N'kwashi Initiative. And so as part of the preservation agreement, anything that goes on down at the mound has to have both EBCI approval and then finally town approval before it takes place. So for the last year and a half, our subcommittee focused just on the mound, that's myself, Barbara Duncan, former executive director of Museum of the Cherokees, Mr. Fred Alexander, I'm sure that most of you know him, and Ms. Taylor with the internal committee, and we've been working on this plan, we've been consulting with the speakers group, elders, tribal council, and the chief, and Mr. Russell Townsend, who's the ultimate authority on cultural things with tribal heritage and preservation. The reason we came up with this, one of the primary reasons, is across the nation, there's increasing incidence of just culturally disrespectful actions taking place, and sometimes outright vandalism. We don't have that here, but with kind of an eye on the future, as we have a thriving community and as we grow, we'd like to take some steps that are both aesthetic and that follow along with preservation and protection. And so that's why we, do any of you, are any of you missing this, or should be, they all have it, if you haven't read it, well, that's on you. So let's see. Yeah, so in the, in the vein of partnership, here we come to you tonight, having gotten approval from EBCI and all the appropriate folks there of this four plan here. And I'd like to explain exactly, the fencing that we're proposing down there would be a three-high split-rail fence, just on the part that's not steep. It would be on the east, west, and south sides of the mound with three breaks in it for public access. And low-profile fence would be about the same height as the two rock corner stones that are down there. It wouldn't be any higher, it wouldn't create visual obstruction. And also some low-profile signage that are asking, asking people to be respectful and suggesting ways that they can do that. So with that, I'm hoping that y'all have had a chance to look this over. We'd certainly field any questions or concerns that you have about this and, and just ask for your approval tonight. Our timeframe, if we get approval, is for the installation to go on over the winter months. We intend to have an annual celebration event there at, at N'kwashi, and, and so we would certainly have everything in place looking good before we begin in springtime for the celebration down there. Oh, I skipped over the other elements of it. We also want to put up some security cameras. We have permission from EBCI to attach one to the Dan's Auto Building, and so included in this would be, with your permission, is to attach one to the existing kiosk that's there on the small town parcel. And between those two cameras, we'd have, we'd have 360-degree coverage. And of course, we would consult with the police department as to what type of cameras would be best used to augment whatever other video is available, and make sure that what we have is usable for everybody. Am I leaving anything out here?
Most of us, most of us sitting up there weren't on the board when this was transferred and the initiative took, took the ownership of the mound and so forth. So it might be, without, without giving a long dissertation, it might be helpful, I know it would be for me especially, to give us some of the basics on what was anticipated at the time it was transferred, and what was the outlook on improvements and, and plans to do what in that area.
So that's probably, the, the real estate down there is probably the most planned-for real estate in western North Carolina through the years, both tribal and, and money that we have raised for N'kwashi Initiative. It's a matter of timing and getting those things in place. When the deed was transferred, there were four principal partners in that, that's the EBCI, Main Spring Conservation Trust, the town of Franklin, and the citizenry of Mankin County, those in general. And so those are the four primary partners. And with that transfer of the deed, it's still, those four partners are still all shareholders, if you will, in that deed. And there is a preservation agreement that went along with that, which brings us here tonight to make sure that we have permission from all the necessary people to, to make any changes there. We have installed a kiosk, which is educational. At some point in the future, we might suggest a second education kiosk, but that's, that's not on the board yet. There's not a lot to be done at the mound. The main thing is to preserve it in place and make sure that no further destruction can happen to it, or, or in this case, you know, we're trying to prevent disrespect. We want people to understand how it came to be, the culture of the people that revere this place, and to teach some cultural sensitivity and education about the people that were here for thousands of years before we, the European community showed that. Am I, am I getting close, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, and we, we got a, just today, I got a, a correspondent from Main Spring who tells us that they're planning on making some improvements down there, and I guess the other question that's come up from time to time is that the Eastern Van bought the old, whatever the name of that place was before. And I haven't heard anything about what they plan to do or when they plan to do anything with it. Do you all know anything about what their plans are at this point?
We're in negotiations with the tribe right now to get a memorandum of agreement, I understand it, that will allow N'kwashi Initiative to start raising funds and start initial renovations of the building. It was an orphaned property for a while, it was not assigned to a particular department, and when, and it has been now. And of course, there, there's been a lot of planning going into the building, everything from tear it down and start new to renovating what's existing. We believe that some renovation can be done to make it usable. And the intentions for that building was for an education center. I hear the word museum used a lot, but early on, we found out that Museum of the Cherokees did not want to take on a satellite to try and curate for a second museum site, and one that would draw people away from the way in Cherokee. But with today's technology, that building can be part museum and exhibition space one day, it can be a classroom the next day, it can be a business meeting center the next, and then it can be an open-air market or workspace for artisans. It can be all, there's five bays in the building, and the back of the building is all open space in there. But there's some costly renovation that has to take place to make it safe and usable.
Does it have any kind of timetable on when that may happen?
We're, all I can tell you is we're in negotiations now, and unless Elaine has an update from them, that, that's really all I can, it, it's a complicated thing that we're trying to do.
The only thing that I've heard, considered concerning the sign is people are concerned about the paragraph in there that talks about asking permission to take photographs. Could you expand, explain what that means and what that's in there?
I will. I will. It may seem a little strange to European culture, however, almost all indigenous peoples have serious concerns about having their image captured. And judging from the way TikTok and Facebook and other things are, we should all show a little concern about image capture. That, that's a cultural aspect to this that we've included to try and show some cultural sensitivity and to do some education in that. There's also the part about walking around the mound clockwise, and there was a lot of discussion as to whether that's a cultural aspect, too, as to whether to leave that in or take it out. In the end, we decided to leave it in so that people would ask questions and, and learn. And then down at the bottom of the sign, of course, we'll have a QR code and our, all of our other addresses where they can learn all about not just this mound, but all the mounds and Cherokee culture in general.
Mr. Mayor, frankly, just briefly, having drafted the deed, and just for a little bit of background, for council members who weren't on the council at the time, it was conveyed to the N'Kwashi Initiative through a statute that permits historic, historically significant sites to be conveyed to a nonprofit. It's what requires us to have the preservation agreement attached to it, and that's why we work through that process. And as Mr. McCullough says, it's, it does speak to the initiative coming to the town council for, for changes to the site, has some, some language, you know, about preservation of public access, which I, I, it sounds like it's going to be honored and maintained. So they're, they're in compliance to be here tonight and ask for that, permission to, to make changes to the site. As to the photography, I think it's a little bit abstract, even the concern from, from the perspective that has been expressed, but I, I would like a little bit more time to research that. Just, I don't know, I got your email, I'm sorry I didn't get you a, a response separately. Theoretically, you know, it, it gets complicated because I understand the spirit of it is in, in preservation of the culture behind it. The legality of a public sidewalk that's right next to it in a protected First Amendment activity of that being photography, with the implication being, and the town is now would have approved something that's through our sort of agent for, for maintenance of the historic significance of the mound, theoretically, somebody could say, "You have chilled that First Amendment activity there." And I don't think it's, and I know the word, the phrase prior restraint got thrown around, without getting into the weeds on that, I don't believe that this would be the example, but there is the possibility of somebody claiming that it's a, it's a unlawful restraint on a free speech right. So I, I suspect it can be taken care of with some wordsmithing, possibly, but I'd like to, if it won't put the initiative out, I need to, to wait until possibly your next meeting to just give that part some thought. I would appreciate a little bit more time.
Yeah, I, I, I would like for the council to consider giving a little more time, letting the attorney do what he needs to do to make sure we don't get into legal trouble on that because, looking back, the mound has been there for a long time, even before cameras were even created. And so even before the, before the, when, when the town actually acquired it back, was it in the 50s?
Forty's.
Forty's, in the 40s? Joe was around then, but I wasn't there, but anyway, I'm just kidding.
Bob and I picked up Coke bottles.
But I'm just thinking, there have probably been thousands and thousands of photographs taken around there over several decades, and so I want to make sure we don't get into trouble by infringing on somebody's rights, so if we pass an ordinance to set up a sign that, that we're going to end up in litigation over, so I like, and, and we're, we're missing two, two of our members tonight. One can't be here, the other one is here, and Rita's here, but she can't vote on anything. So I'd like for the board to consider giving our attorney at least another month to go ahead and research this thing before the board takes any final action on that. I'll, I'll ask for input from the board on any of those aspects, or ask us for a couple of many questions that you might have.
Can I point out something before we go to that? If you'll read that, I'm no legal expert, and I don't intend to argue with Mr. Eni here. Everything that we ask for in there is prefaced with the word "please." I don't think there's anything terribly restrictive in that or preventative. If we're asking people to please do something, there's almost an expectation in that that you realize everybody's not going to do that. And we certainly, we certainly don't intend to, to restrict anybody's rights there. But there's no punitive action suggested if people don't abide by our suggestions there. What if we just put the word "please" in front of each one of the bullets there?
Anything was changed on the way it is right now by the town board, would you have to go back and get it re-approved by the Eastern Van?
I think we can, I think we can strike that if we absolutely have to. But we're just trying to show a little cultural sensitivity there about the image capture thing, to the point that we've agreed that when, when EBCI or Cherokee events are held there, the cameras that we're talking about putting up would be turned off during those events in honor of their, their wishes. But, so I would, I'll just throw that out there for maybe council discretion.
Maybe one way to look at it, one of the, one of the great things about N'kwashi is that it's, it's in a place where the public can be around it and interact it and learn about it. And we've talked a lot on this board about the fact that if you're able to be around something and interact with it, you tend to love it more than you would otherwise. The photography, we should definitely be more culturally sensitive, and maybe there's a way to just remind people that it's important for indigenous people, as opposed to the language that we have now, because the, the other thing about that mound is, you know, being a place where there's sidewalks and, and the gas station next door, it would be virtually impossible for us to release it if we wanted to. So I agree with the attorney, maybe there's a way to wordsmith that, so we can keep it in there to, to teach people to be culturally sensitive about it. And I also wanted to go a little further on the email we got today from Main Spring, if they have been used, because they've got money to clean up the, the old Simpson parcel, which is now next to our Women's History Temple, which is, to create some more open space. I know when we went through the planning process for that area down there, one of the things that we heard over and over from the elders was that, that that mound needed some rooming to breathe and also to maintain a connection with the river. And so I'm really pleased with that, but I think that's a big step.
A great addition.
And, and I'm also pleased that you're, you know, the way you work on the fencing is still going to allow for the public to interact with it, and I really appreciate that.
Mr. McCullough, you've been on this board along with all the rest of us put together. Be interested hearing any of your observations or comments that you may have.
No, it's just a, it's the future, and we've got people working towards preserving it as, as it needs to be, and I try my very best to not get in the way of those who've thought about it a lot more than I have. You know, this, like the access to it. We're not really saying you can't go on it. You really don't want people to go on it, and as quick as a football team gets off a bus because they're not happy with Franklin and have their cleats on and go up there and jump on top of it, we'll be back down here telling everybody, "You can't go on it." And that's where we'll get to one of these days, maybe. I hope not, but I don't want to get there yet. So I think the, the steps that are being taken right now, I could stand behind them easily, easily.
Mr. Lane, don't let me let you leave, don't let me leave you out if you have any comments or questions.
Well, I thank you all for coming again tonight, and I had talked about not the enforcement part of it, but that it, it doesn't necessarily strike that it's all cultural, I mean, that the reason for no photos and the reason for walking in a certain direction. I do think it could be. I do think it could be more explicit that that is, um, because of the culture and I'd love for it to be a little more explicit, um, because we're not gonna, there's no way that it forces either one of those things, the way people walk around it or whether or not they're taking in pictures. So I appreciate y'all coming and I do like the fence quite a bit. I think that's the lullaby to the Women's History Trail camp. So a little more time would be helpful as our attorney said, and other than that, I think it's looking good.
Anyone else? Mr. Lewis? Well, Mr. Attorney, you'll work on that and we'll put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Yes, sir. And I, I, again, I hope it's not an imposition for initiative. I, I believe we'll get there. It's just, again, I think it's a matter of a little bit of wordsmithing. I understand it's not going to be prohibited or punitive or anything like that.
There's quite a few things, there's quite a few things on this end of town that want, we want people to know that this is Franklin. And with, with the, uh, sculpture we have down there now and with the other, the Women's History Trail and so forth, we want that area to be welcoming in every way and as friendly as we can in every way and non-restrictive, but protection as well. And so we want to work closely with you all to make sure that we preserve what we have. And thanks to the, thanks to the visionary leadership of those kids back in the forties who raised money to buy that property, otherwise there'd probably be a building sitting there now. So we need to probably preserve what we can and, and, and make sure that we have a beautiful entrance into our town and protect it and work with everybody, including the Eastern Band. And I'd love, I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk with the chief since he's been elected, but I'd like to knock a community at some point in time to do that.
Can I say a word? Thank you, everybody. Um, I just want to thank the Town of Franklin for being our partner in this and to really ask you, please, to embrace the fact that we need that partnership in a much bigger way going forward. We, we're going to need to be really, um, like this in terms of conversation to get that learning center built. And I just want to give you guys a head up, heads up that, um, we're grateful for the partnership to this point. It's going to grow going forward. And what Rita said about being more explicit with the sign, that's what that learning center is going to do. It's going to increase the amount of education that we can share out to the public. And so this sign is sort of like a starting point. It's like a baby step forward and then hopefully we'll be able to move forward to where we have this world-class education center there that really teaches everybody what they need to know. But thank you.
Does anyone else have a question or comment?
We'll do some wordsmithing.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you all for being here and, uh, thank you very much for what you did.
The signage, will it, will you have the English ends that you celebrate?
Yes, yes. We've agreed to do that on all of our, all of our signage. It's going to be low profile too. We're not going to have a big shiny sign sticking up there higher than the fence. It will be down at the fence level. Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Sitzer, we have a request for voluntary annexation. Would you please bring that forward?
Good evening, Mayor, Council again. Um, yeah, for you, you have an application for annexation at 2222 Georgia Road, or some people might know, the old Longview Steakhouse property. Um, let's see what the owners have signed it. Some of the tenants that are planning on renting it and wanting to open a business that are here, the DeAngelo's in the back, have any questions of them, they're kind of conspiring it for the owner. Um, I mean, we've got to get the clerk to certify it, but they've already submitted their surveys, um, paid their application fees, got their notarized statements that you should see in your packet. So it's, um, on you for the next day.
Would there be any additional expense to the town if this annexation is approved?
Well, it says there's water and sewer already there. That was one thing we checked. Um, it's already in the ETJ zone, so we don't have to do any special rezoning. It's zoned properly for what their type of business they're wanting to do there. Um, just need to be annexed. It's going to be a satellite annexation, obviously, not a contiguous one.
Does the board have any questions for Mr. Sitzer?
I had lots of great food there. That's all I can say.
Oh, yeah.
Now, what, what are you asking the council to report tonight specifically, Mr. Sitzer?
Um, I believe what we need is you need to, I guess, direct your clerk to certify the annexation documents and then you need to set a hearing.
Just take some action for the board. Is there a motion concerning the request? Mr. Duffy, Mr. Sitzer, second?
Second.
Mr. Collins, second. Is there any discussion?
What are the, what are the plans?
Can we even ask that?
Can I ask? Just out of curiosity? I think you can in terms of an annexation because it's voluntary on both sides. If you were talking about.
Let the DeAngelos tell you their plans and others than me, they won't come up. It's theirs. Let them.
And Justin, I'd direct that law for them to also address why they want to be annexed.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. My name's Rob DeAngelo and my wife Anita in the back. Uh, we're here on behalf of the owners. Uh, the Lola is the family, the Lenders family bought it. They've opened up a retail there on the property already. We are planning to open up a wine bar and also a food truck park. So we need the annexation for the liquor license. We've gotten some positive feedback from everybody we've talked to about it. We know it's got a, a storied history with the Longview Restaurant being there. So we just feel like about not being out on the outskirts of Georgia Road, we'd love to be, uh, welcome into the Franklin family and be part of the community that way.
Any other questions? Comments? If not.
Everybody gets a free drink.
I need to amend my motion according to our attorney.
All right. You restate your motion, please.
But, uh, I make a motion for, to call for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, September the 3rd, 2024 at 6:05 PM or as closely there as I can, for the purpose of public input for the voluntary annexation of 2222 Georgia Road into the Town of Franklin Corporation.
Do you second concur with that?
I do, second.
Any more discussion?
With voluntary annexation, there's no duty to notify the neighborhood or neighbors or anything, is there?
No, uh, I think the only things, I think the only things required are if it's in, if it, is that already in our fire? It's already in. If it was in another fire district, then you'd have to, to hand it off and that takes some paperwork and some money, some income, but totally net, I don't think so. The clerk does have to certify it, um, but I don't think she needs to be particularly directed to do it. I will just point out while we're talking about it, this is another place where our local act relieved us of the, the calculation of how much area we've got in satellite annexation is useful again. We don't have to think about it because we've got our speculative blitche down the, the Georgia Road is, is what's come into play a couple of times here. So it's going to be very easy to certify.
Well, yes, off the first promise.
Something's been done down there.
Right. Spectacular.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Two left.
Another motion, second, is, uh, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed, the like sign? Motion carries, we'll proceed on that regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Ms. Owens, we have a request for street closure.
Yes, sir. On September 11th, been requested to close Iowa temporarily from 8:30 AM until, um, 9:00 AM to commemorate the anniversary of 9/11. There will be a short ceremony there so that we can continue to remember that day and the impact that it had on us.
Have a motion to approve, second, secondly. Mr. Duffy, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Close the like sign, the motion carries. Uh, departmental reports. First up tonight is Mr. Bill Dale, our Public Works Director and one of the best in the Mr. Dale.
Thank you, Mayor, Town Council. I was thinking today about the departmental update and I was thinking, I don't have much to give tonight, but then I sat down and thought and I do have several things and some of it's old, but, uh, it, it is complete and, uh, y'all have been traveled up Clutch Street, Watauga Street and saw the work that's been done up there. Um, that turned out really well and that project is, is complete. We also, while we were up there, uh, changed out a galvanized water line on Janelle Street that got completed this week. So that, that line is completely out of the system now and it's got a new two-inch, uh, plastic pipe in there. So those people should be happy as well because it takes a while to fix a galvanized line. So we are also, uh, as you heard tonight, we've got several employees that have been certified in certain areas and, uh, really pleased that those guys and gals, well, one of them was a water plant last month, but, uh, we're so glad that they're continuing their education and we've got several in training in schools right now and upcoming schools. So, um, the meter reader, uh, was not something that we didn't have in place before as a certification and I'm really pleased with the management that we were able to get that pushed through. So, um, we've got some projects in the works. Wilkie Street Sewer Line is in the works and, uh, should be on the radar pretty soon. We also have Solid Road and Mary Boulevard Water Loop out there that has been designed and, uh, submitted for DQ's approval and, uh, we're working through some stuff with the DOT right now. They're, they've got some comments on it, but we're, we're thankful that we're probably going to be able to work through those. Um, also too, one of the projects up that's part of Seneca Ridge, the water line that would have cut through Seneca Ridge over to Redbird Mountain is underway and they pressure tested it today. So that will be relocated and probably up and running by first and next week according to Watson's contracting. So I'm really happy about that. And, uh, also too, something we don't think about very often, but, you know, even with our new meter reader, uh, in place and him getting certified, we, we needed to update some water meters. And, uh, what happens is when these are, get outdated, they don't pick up on our automated system and our guys are having to manually read about 500, 550 water meters right now. So thankful that you guys have, uh, approved the money and budget to replace some water meters. It's going to take a little time, but we want to make sure that we're accurate with that and, uh, as efficient as we can on that too. So it's going to take a little time to replace some of these, but as we're moving forward, that's some of the things we're trying to keep up to pace with because, you know, we want to make sure we're accurate. We want to make sure people are being built what they're supposed to be being built. And it, it comes a hassle when we've got to go out and reread, 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 but this will help us with that. It'll go back into the automated system. I know Chris Waldron's got several projects that have been knocked out and I'll let him speak on those and I'll steal his thunder, but I do appreciate the Town Council and the Mayor and the support for Public Works and all of our departments and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Bill. Anybody have any questions for Bill? If not, let's ask Mr. Kyle, catch them up and tell us about the water treatment plant.
Good evening. Water plant, same old, same old. We're all good, making water. Um, we have been working on relocating the generator from the hospital to the water plant. Uh, next week we should have it all completed. Um, like Bill said, we did have one operator who got her B certification. I couldn't be any more prouder of her. And we have one trainee who's very excited to go to school. Water usage is still above our river level. It's higher than it was last year at this time, so we're in good shape.
Do you want to have any questions for Kyle? If not, let's talk about wastewater. Jason?
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, appreciate your time tonight. Uh, I'll put on my wastewater ORC hat first and, uh, just do a little bit of wastewater. Uh, we've treated 70 million gallons in the last quarter. This is a quarterly meeting. We come up here, so this is kind of an average or a total. Uh, we pressed 356 tons of sludge to the landfill. Our BOD efficiency removal is 99.1%, 85 is the minimum that the state requires. We were 99.1, 99.4% on our solids removal, so that again, we were almost 100%. We're 85 is the mandatory. We received our new permit, which is our, our bible, our law. So we have to go by. Um, so we've got new rules and regulations to, to learn and to follow. So, uh, Cody went to his wastewater tube class and will be testing in September, so we look forward to, to him progressing and he's doing a fantastic job for us. I went to physical chemical one so I can get another hat and help out with the lagoons at the water plant. Um, so that'll help with the back tea testing when we have a line break and we don't have to wait for two or three days on our water, our groundwater advisories now. We can do it at the sewer plant in our certified lab, so that's going to help the town out. Um, for my pretreatment hat, I'll put it on as the pretreatment coordinator. We had a state, uh, pretreatment inspection today. Zero findings, everything went well, so she left with a smile. Um, that went well. Um, and the county cleaned up the leachate pond down to empty, so we started fresh there. So we shouldn't have, a couple of years ago, they had some cyanide issues that we worked through and, and got, uh, fixed and it never did affect the wastewater plant or the river. So we were able to take care of that in the wastewater plant before it perused the river. So, uh, it is fresh and, and started over, so we look forward to having a fresh slate to, to go by there. Um, and I did finish up pretreatment three, so I'll have to find another avenue now to, to go down. I'm thinking lab's probably going to be my next avenue because our lab supervisor, Mr. Allen, will be retiring probably in the next four years, so. And I appreciate everything y'all do for us.
Thank you. There's a, there's a big storm that y'all noticed of these coming up the coast.
Oh, we're already ready, sir.
People don't realize, we're not going to be quite as affected by that as the folks on the coast are.
Yeah.
But the folks who operate their wastewater treatment plant.
We keep track of the storms.
They're going, they're going to have a tough time.
I've got the EQ down to minimum. Uh, we're ready for, to get some water, so we'll have somewhere to put it.
Good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you. There's a couple of things that people always complain about, that streets and sidewalks, that's always the first thing that people compliment you on when you get them fixed, right?
That's it. That's absolutely right. So I think the, from the last time we've met, we completed Harrison Avenue from, uh, Slender Window Wine Shop all the way to Church Street. Um, project went really well. It, uh, couldn't have been a better subcontractor to use for that. I was really pleased with their work, so I think from the feedback I've gotten, everyone's really pleased with that. Also the one we did on the field tree, I think it's been really, really good. Um, other projects we've gotten on, we just completed a culvert replacement on Olco Drive. Um, we replaced two dilapidated 18-inch concrete culverts with a brand-new 42-inch plastic culvert. We were able to realign it in line with the creek, so it doesn't have to, there's a couple of some S turns and things it had to do, so that water flows in, do a bigger pipe and flows out. So that should help with a lot of erosion issues we're having there. Um, we've got some major, you know, utilities on either side of that, so that should help keep erosion down. Um, the only thing left on that is just working with the contractor to come back and just repave, but road is open and should be good for everyone to have whatever flow we want to get. Um, now that we've got some rain, we're back on a normal schedule of mowing that we need. We're kind of, maybe we'll have a break there for a little while. We had a good drought going on, but since the weather's picked back up, we're, things are growing again, so we're back on schedule there. We're methodically moving through town on a long-arm rideaway mowing, um, trying to keep these Owens updated, um, every week of where we're moving to. I know we're feeling a lot of phone calls right now and that's just a, it's just a tedious process. You know, our trade doesn't, it's not a fast process. We've got fan holes, home pedestals, a lot of things you have to try to avoid, guide wire, telephone poles. So, um, we've got Jackie Downs is our operator on that, doing it for years, really meticulous, does a really fine job of that. So we're working our way through. Um, we're going to get that completed here in the next couple of weeks or so. Um, still doing some planning phases on some sidewalks and paving that we're looking at. We've got a couple of avenues we're wanting to go. I'm wanting to, I want to see how far the state does with their curb ramp replacement now. I don't want to do anything ahead of what they do, let them take care of the majority of that for us. And then we'll check with our transition plan, our CIP, and see where we can tie in with maybe what they've done. So that's what we're kind of working through on the planning phase of those projects right now.
Someone asked me the other day, what we're going to pave Main Street. I said, well, that belongs to the state.
Yeah, that one.
So, a lot of people don't realize that that's a state highway that runs, runs straight through the middle of town. So I had a chance to talk to Ms. Owens. So I had a chance to talk to Miss Owens about the state's schedule on repaving that street, that road. Unfortunately, it's going to be a few more years before they're able to do that.
Well, I was going to talk after the announcements, but we have a closed session and the press may not be here after that, so I'm going to go ahead and say, Main Street, this is nothing on our town manager or any of our town personnel. This is solely on state. The condition of that street is a damn disgrace, an absolute disgrace. And they've been putting us off now for almost 14 years. It's ridiculous. So we really need to think about, I'm getting tired of DOT just kicking the can down the road. So I'd like to see some kind of formal letter, whether to do any good or not. I think I need to hear a displeasure. But it's that, the condition of that street is an absolute disgrace. That's the main third hurdle of our town. And we spend a lot of money and do a lot of things to beautify that area and to have it undermined by that, it's just, it's immense. The street is immense, patched, cracked, drive, file truck, beat you to death, driving downtown. So we need to do some collective liaisons over it.
We can try to press them again and there may be some other alternatives that we may not be quite aware of right now.
Never know.
At one time in the past, there was a fund set up for special projects for district directors of the Department of Transportation called discretionary funds where they could take stuff and move it along. Perhaps that's an avenue we ought to look into. But yeah, like we say, that's, we get complaints about sidewalks, of course, streets as well. Of course, I've got a lot of, I've got a lot of good positive comments on the work that's been done recently by our folks on the streets and the sidewalks. So we need to do more work on that and work on the state to try to get them to move that along. Right now, the latest figure that we understand is the state's not even got that program to work on Main Street until '28? '28, I believe. So we need to do everything we can to move that forward as quickly as possible.
In my opinion, that's unacceptable.
Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Chris.
One thing I'd like to say is I get a lot of phone calls and get stopped in the grocery store and usually it's negative stuff, but those two sidewalks, people blew up my phone over how much I appreciate those sidewalks and how amazed they were that it got done so quickly. So I very appreciate it.
Like I said, that's a testament to, you know, the hiring the right people to do the right job and do it right and making sure we really vet those people out, make sure we have the right people doing the right jobs. And then follow-up from top down to is it being done and talking it up and letting them know this is why we're doing it. You know, it's making connectivity downtown. If we're going to have those things downtown, we've got to be able to get there. So we've got to work all works together.
Chris, if you would, let all of your folks, as well as the other folks who made your presentations tonight, let them know that the town appreciates their hard work for the things they do. And a lot of pounds, they get only the complaints, they don't get the praise that they deserve. So tell them all on our behalf that we appreciate and that goes for everyone else back there too. Let them know that the town board and the mayor appreciates the hard work that they do to serve our citizens.
Absolutely. Will do. Thank you.
Last but certainly not least, we're going to talk about information technology. Mr. Sessions.
Good evening, again. I was supposed to do this last month, but I was on the battlefield lunch and I had ten-year-olds playing softball, so I told Amy I'd catch up this week, this month. Handing out is, being around the topic of state roads, this is that list that Mike was talking about. That's the next five years, DOT paving plan for the whole county. And you can see 441 business, a lot of it's 28 or 29. It was 25 two years ago, so I was, thought it was coming close and then had them double check and then it got pushed out three years. My previous good old vet board on that. Also on that list, on the second page is, we're coming up on the state prioritization, the STIP 7.0. 6.0 was pretty much canceled because of lack of funds across the whole state. Whenever there was, through COVID, whenever there was any fuel taxes in the state, they didn't have the funds to do any projects other than ones that were already, some were even, some that were already programmed across the state, they weren't able to do. But the, that's the seven, that's the list from seven. Myself, the Mayor Horton and Town Manager Owens went to a meeting here with other county people on County Highlands and we've kind of ranked our, what we thought was the best ones, most likely that probably would potentially maybe get funded. There will, there's no funds for the, I think it's the region section, the regional section. You'll see, there's points on it, but they pretty much told us there's no funds still for that. Yeah, the regional. So the only funds that are available is the division section, which is Division 14, which is the, I think it's the 10 western counties, not including Buckland County. But there's only $52 million to go around from those counties for those projects. So you've got to imagine all those counties and how much money. It's not going to go very far. So we were trying to put our points where we think might go the furthest and get some projects done. So that's just where you're, you can see those projects. If these get funded in 7.0, you're, it's five plus years for you see any work, five to see any work being done on those. So it's nothing.
Justin, I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
On our own moves, the Big Bear Lane improvements that we agreed around the women's history trail, so what's the timeline on that?
That's part, that's part of what Chris and I and Justin are going to have to sit down and prioritize based on what we've got particularly for the sidewalk and everything.
And that's on our down, right?
Yeah. So quick on some planning. 2024, we're kind of having a boom year of building in town. Building permits, land development permits are just normal. We're running in August and we're, I wouldn't be surprised that we pass our highest we've ever done in the 10 years I've worked for the town by the end of the month. We're at 46 permits already this year and last year was the highest I've seen in the 10 years that I've been here and we had 52. So there's a lot of construction going on. As you can see, a lot, as most people can notice going through town. Yeah, the Big Bear Lane, piggybacking on that, Big Bear Lane and the N'Kwasi Lane study, that was a fund that, I remember we talking all the past year about the tag grant. That was a grant we got from DEQ. That project has been completed. It is to DOT for their comments, for them to have comments. I haven't got that back yet, us or the planning organization. So I'm just waiting on that. Hopefully I'll have that back for y'all to look over in September, hopefully. But you know, that was looking at the one-way on Big Bear, we're talking about with added parking, working at N'Kwasi Lane for some change of stuff running down there to potentially close a portion of it, even on-street parking to help, you know, with some traffic control and noise and slowing some traffic down in there. So that was, the study studied all that around there. On, continuing with studies, we had a, our third steering committee meeting last month in July on the Crawford Branch, Greenway feasibility study. This last one, we focused on the steering committee looking at the routes for the feasibility study. There was a lot of different avenues, trying to navigate, you know, owners that were receptive to it and ones that weren't, and trying to navigate the best route and getting down to maybe like two options. So they were getting steering committees' thoughts on that and they've since received those and now they're going to come back one last time with a final. Hopefully then we'll, probably won't see that back until probably October. You might see that, do that study back for us and we'll have a playbook of what we want to do on that in the future. The Wi-Fi, I was going to give you an update on the Wi-Fi, the downtown Wi-Fi program. It's been up for about four months now in town. Get my numbers here. In that timeframe, we steadily have seen the increase in the usage over that, since April. We've seen 2,385 unique, different clients that connect to the Wi-Fi. Some of them are multiple times or maybe get on every day, but that's different people that are using it. You know, not everybody gets on it when they're here. So you're starting to see the usage more. At events, you're seeing, you're seeing really steady events. You can actually see when there's a event, you can see a spike in the usage. And so there's multiple connections an hour, usually about, we're saying about 200 different connections an hour and then 66 different clients a day is the average right now. So it's being used. Some sites, parts of it are a little more than others, but it's getting used.
Justin, before you move on, Bill, is there, because why do they know that Wi-Fi is available downtown or do we need to do something, let people know that Wi-Fi is available? Signage or something?
We haven't got any signage up or anything, but we, I know we've put it on social media a few times, papers done some stuff. Most people that want Wi-Fi, they look for it and they just see it. You know, they're, they kind of become their routine. They just look for Wi-Fi and they get on it. But I haven't seen any abuse of it or anything. I haven't heard of any, you know, maxing it out and it's, it's real slow for anybody. But we can look at doing some signage. We want to see people use it more.
We'll be on our website too. It's on our website that it's available downtown, so.
Phase two of the downtown historic district has started. Hopefully we'll have that completed in the next few months, so we can get that before the, the state HPO office in March has to plan it out, to get it before them in March. Hopefully we'll have that done in the next two months tops, so we can get it before them and then hopefully we'll get a determination on that program. And we do have one planning board appointment that's coming up. Haven't talked to the current member, I probably want reemployment, but we have one that's coming up that expires this month, so I'll have that next month fall in our plan, probably have a chance for that. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Sessions? Thank you, Justin. Social District, Pumpkin Fest, Winter Wonderland. Ms. Owens, would you lead us in that discussion?
Certainly. Pumpkin Fest, Winter Wonderland are the two main events that this town hosts. We also do the Fourth of July as well as Memorial Day and Veterans Day, some celebration. But those are our two biggest events. Based on what occurred this past weekend, the social district was very successful. However, it has been brought to our attention that these two events may or may not be something that you want to have the social district active in. And as they are town events, it is up to you all to determine whether or not to suspend the social district for a certain period of time, to allow it to happen or any.
So just to be clear, social districts are allowable daily?
From noon to night.
From noon to night unless the town board decides they don't want to have it during a certain day or a certain festival or?
For our sponsor festivals. Everybody else gets to choose for their, for their own festival. And part of that is, we have vendors who participated in the event this weekend who would like to be pumpkinfest but are not currently in the social district. So they have to come into the social district. And if you suspend or change the social district hours, then they would not be able to be vendors at. So that's where in this discussion needs to go.
Questions, comments, observations, recommendations? Is that just for information purposes or do you want?
This is a decision that you as the town council has to make.
So is this just a thought whether we're going to preemptively not have it because we think it wouldn't fit with the flow of the?
Well, we need to know because if the vendors want to participate, we can't put a check in the bank for them to be a participant. We can't anticipate them selling social district cups. We can't.
Right.
It's a planning decision that we need to make.
I just can't imagine we wouldn't go with it until we realized that we shouldn't go with it, if you know what I mean. I wouldn't preemptively not, I wouldn't cut it back preemptively. Maybe if we had it and looking back in hindsight, say maybe not next year, but I'd hate to. That's just kind of my first thoughts.
You've got a pretty narrow window with Pumpkin Fest anyway. It's from, you can't start selling until 12 and the majority of people are gone by wind.
Around 3:00, 3:30. It's a whole different story.
Yeah, I think it's.
As far as that's concerned.
If the board takes no action, it'll be as normally as?
Read ahead to it.
Read ahead to the question. Just read them.
I didn't hear what you said, Joe. Did you say that you didn't see any reason not to do it? Would you repeat and speak into the tube, please?
Yeah, Rita. I think we, we allow it starting now. If there's some reason in hindsight that we don't in the future, that's another story, but I don't think we should just preemptively assume that we don't want to have it for these occasions. I think it's going to be much ado about nothing, but I think we, if we enacted the social district, I think we give it the chance until we're, we see that we shouldn't.
Amy, have we had any complaints or problems or anything that makes you hesitant about? Not, I mean, it makes you hesitant, say this is, it's been a problem and we don't want to go with it for our town sponsor events?
There haven't been any issues or incidences that were reported. We haven't had any police interactions or anything like that. The biggest concern is if we have vendors who are not currently in the social district, i.e. Slanted Window, Currie, whomever, they don't have the social district cups to sell at Pumpkin Fest and things like that. They don't have the stickers like everybody else that's already in the district. The reason they were able to do that for 80's flashback is there was a special cup that had the social district logo that was sold there during the event. They can still use those cups, but we don't have a Pumpkin Fest cup that can be sold there. It's, and the stickers that adhere to that. So it's, it's just a little bit different with this event than it was with the event that happened this past weekend. But the social district as a whole, we've not had any issues with. People are using their white cups, they're getting the stickers on them, they're bringing them back, they're reusing them.
Did we hear anything from the vendors that are in the social district about Currie and Slanted Window participating?
There were no issues this past weekend. We haven't asked as a whole because we've limited the district to just being downtown of course. Slanted Window.
I could see where, I could see there's someone who has a business downtown that is a sponsor and participates in the social district cups and so forth. I could see where maybe at some point in time, they would not welcome vendors from south of the social district to come in and take part of their business because they're not normally located in town. Do you think that could be a problem?
Just to speak to this weekend, the lines were massive. There were three vendors on Main, well, there were four if you include Outdoor 76.
I mean, all of the.
That did the window.
Yeah.
But you had people on Main Street that came out of their businesses to them, Lazy Hiker, Currie.
Currie's not in this.
Slanted Window. But my point is, they all had major names and made major money. Is there not some way for us to make an exception during events that we can have other vendors? I mean, what comes to mind, I don't know, it seems like that's a good opportunity for businesses that are still in our town to make some extra money during festivals and for people who go to it to have a little more variety as well.
It's just a matter of getting the cups. It's just a matter of getting the cups in the district.
Collins has a good point that we don't know what issues may or may not arise until you have some experience with this. And so it's probably, it's probably wise to go ahead and try and see how it works out. And if there are problems, you can always come back and say, we'll have to modify it from here on because that didn't work out in this particular type of event. And that gives you some history and some justification for going back and changing it.
Thank you, but my first thought was, will we be in the moral police by saying we didn't want them on, on these two events? Thinking maybe there's more children, more families, whatever. Or is it logistically the issue that I didn't pick up on that you're trying to tell us is going to be a problem?
Well, I think it could be a little bit of both. I mean, again, that's what we've heard when we initiated the social district is Pumpkin Fest and Winter Wonderland were the two events that people said were always so family friendly and they didn't want to change that. A lot of people, of course, out on social media, nobody came to the council meeting to express that. But we didn't have any problems over the weekend with ABC Flashback and having three different alcohol vendors, plus whoever was already in the social district there. It's just a matter of the logistics related to the cups.
So what can we do about the logistics related to the cups? Because don't you have a, you have a vendor already who would like to be at one of the events? So what's the solution to that? We want a vendor that are outside the district.
Well, they would have to sell the cups like everybody else that's in it. So they would have to purchase those cups.
But do we have to do anything with ordinance or anything like that?
No.
Is that possible?
So the absence of a vote.
You cannot have other ones come into the district until you vote to say they can come in as vendors for an event.
But they did that just this past weekend?
But they had to purchase the cups through a different manner because they don't have the cups because they're not part of the social district. They can't legally sell the cups in their current roles in their businesses like the people on Main Street do have their ABC permit.
Amy, how did they get the cups? I mean, how, how was that negotiated so that they could participate? And can we follow that model?
ABC Flashback purchased all of the cups and then resold them as donations into, for shriners. That's what the green cups were about. They paid for those and then individuals who were drinking got Arden's and got ID'd and then purchased the cups and were able to purchase alcoholic beverages on Main Street for vendors who were not included in the social district originally.
So if the board takes no action tonight, it stays as it is? And outside vendors are not able to come in and operate in the social district if you're not already in the social district?
Correct.
What's your recommendation?
I don't have a recommendation. This is, I mean, it was successful this past weekend. Logistically, the cups are the only issue.
So if Currie wanted to participate, what, they would just have to buy the cups?
They would have to buy the cups for the event and then resell them.
I think it's unfair that, I mean, these businesses are in our town and they want to participate. I just think it's fair to figure out a way to let them participate.
Well, hey, these are times that can fall to death, but I don't like picking winners and losers. I think, I agree with you. Is this a flaw in the ordinance? Is this something we should have addressed in the ordinance for our, our ordinance when we did it or, I mean?
No.
I mean, let me make sure I understand. The issue is just a matter of a town sponsored event and do you want to allow outside vendors at the event? It's really not about the social. The social district is set up the way it's supposed to be set up and interstate law is operating the way it's supposed to be. It's more, you've got a town event that you sponsor, do you want to allow outside vendors who aren't already located in the social district in for your events? Will those businesses play back to just like everybody else? They ought to be able to.
Rita has her hand up. Thank you.
Well, I mean, we, we gave the vendors in the town the cups to start with. I'd say that we buy them, I mean, I know I can't vote, but that we could buy them and sell them to those vendors that are outside the district. Just, I mean, I think we got something we could do or we could give them to them. But I wouldn't do it next, I wouldn't give them to them next year, just like we're not going to give them to the other participants next year. Right?
Correct. They, every one of the 1,500 cups that we ordered originally have been given out. And if anybody who is one of the existing ABC permates, they have to reorder their own. But we don't have any in stock here. I mean, we gave them all out, so we would have to order more if you want to give them to outside breweries and wineries.
Do you have a suggestion on a promotion that would make that possible? How that should go?
Outside vendors?
Just to allow outside vendors?
And have the requirement? I mean, I don't know how we're going to do the cups because that's not a budgeted expense that we have.
Basically, Pumpkin Fest and Winter Wonderland are both festivals sponsored by the town.
Correct.
The town board can suspend the social district during those town festivities if they would like to. If they don't suspend them, then it operates as it normally would, on the hours that are included in the ordinance.
Correct.
Correct.
The only thing is, is it excludes any outside vendors.
And it excludes any outside vendors.
Do we have, do we have the cups in stock?
No, we gave them all out.
Can the outside vendors not buy the cups?
Yeah, I mean, I've got all the ordering information. It's just they've been sort of reticent to do so because they can't, they're not in the social district. It would just be.
It seems to be that one of the, one of the key points in selling the idea of a social district was to benefit those businesses that are already in the social district. Are, are we, are we going against one of those original selling points if we allow outside vendors to come in who are not normally located in the social district?
If we, if we table this this month and make the decision next month, you still have time.
We still have time, yes.
I'll make a motion we table this until next month.
Motion to table this discussion until the next regular meeting of the board in September. Motion made and seconded, this area in discussion. Hearing not all of us are fair to the motion, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed, if I like a sign? The motion is tabled until the next meeting.
Any direction for me between now and then?
We talk to the vendors, the potential vendors and see if they have enough time to buy the cups on Sunday because.
So they can bring them back and get the stickers.
They don't bring them back, they're out of line. So would they have to be buying them?
Okay, let's talk about TDA.
So the TDA was asked to provide a written report to the council related to the one-third tourism-related dollars as part of the questions. Two-thirds is for marketing and communications, one-third is tourism-related. The TDA board considers their festival event sponsorships as tourism-related expenditures and they approved in the budget $30,000 for that. And then undesicated and miscellaneous, there's $16,350 currently in the budget. There's not a project per se that's there for that. The TDA is open to receiving direction from the council or an application for something to utilize those funds that's tourism-related. But at this point, there's nothing specific that they have those funds as.
How much time do we have to, if, if someone came up with a recommendation on how to use those funds, when does that need to be put in and when does that need to be expended? Is that this fiscal year?
It's this fiscal year, yes.
So between now and July 1st?
They would have to say, get it to the TDA at their May meeting to vote in June and be done by June 30th. So that's the latest, but any time between now and then.
Is, are, are any board members thought about this enough to make a recommendation?
Thought about it, Mike.
Mike, is there any reason for us to go ahead and take, take action on this tonight? Or is this something that you want to think about and decide at your next meeting?
This was just what the TDA was instructed to do, was to come back and say if they had a plan in place and the plan is they have dollars set aside, it's just a matter of somebody.
So we've got $16,350 that can be used based on a recommendation where the town thinks it will promote travel and tourism or support.
Or is somebody else applies. That's the whole point. It's, it's a pool of money that can be utilized for tourism-related expenditure, whether that's infrastructure like restaurants or the flags that are faded up and down Main Street and around the town. You know, sponsorship of a piece of equipment at the playground when it comes to fruition. There's all sorts of different uses.
I'd like, I'd like for us to come up with a plan to use that $16,350 for something that supports travel and tourism, whether it be a, one of the projects that you're talking about or something else. If we have time to do it, I don't have anything on my, in my, in my mind right now. That's where a party would be on where the money should be spent. But I think it'd be, it should be something, we've talked about this in the past, that all the money is going for advertising and promotions and so forth. I think it's about time we took some of that and put it back into some kind of an infrastructure or some kind of a, of a program or project here that shows actual dollars generated from tourism going back into a project that people can readily identify in town. If we can come up with one of those, I'd like to see us do that if we could.
Okay, can you say wait? Are you referring to the council?
I'm referring to the council.
Okay. Or do you need me to hold you all individually and get the recommendations together so that you can discuss them either at the next meeting or at your strategic planning meeting in September?
Amy, do they have no desire to suggest something or they just confirmed us just because I think it should?
No, I think it's just a matter of, it's never been done before other than the first time last year, there was a $5,000 donation for the Women's History Trail. And it's just something that there's not a lot of experience with at this point.
Well, unless somebody has a specific project or purpose for that money, I'd like for the board of members to think about that and be prepared to give us some recommendations on or before our next meeting.
And those physical investments are an investment that you'll get a return on year after year after year. Not when you do an advertisement, it's maybe one shot that year and it's.
Exactly, exactly.
That tangible stuff is what you get the return on year after year.
I agree a hundred percent, right. Okay, is that enough for you to proceed with that then, Ms. Manager? Okay, if so, then let's talk about the money we have left over from the ARPA funding and how that needs to be spent. And the town manager and the management team has put together some recommendations on how to use that. As you all recall, those funds that are left in ARPA have to be committed or expended between now and Ju-, and December 31st. After, and even though they're not spent necessarily by December 31st, they have to be committed and obligated and spent within the next two years. Is that correct, Sarah?
Yes, sir.
So you have a recommendation in a printout and some projects that would be ARPA eligible for the board's dialogue?
Yep.
Okay.
So you've got some documents in front of you, but just real quick, wanted to run through and let you, give you guys a quick run-through on ARPA and what we have spent and how we've spent it. Just as a recap, these were the uses originally outlined to us from the treasury in the original ARPA guidance. Replacement of lost revenue, which we did not have any lost revenue, but in later guidance, they updated about every six months. It seems like they went ahead and any small municipality like we are, we can claim all of our money as revenue replacement if we would like. They just went ahead and set a threshold so we didn't have to prove that we lost revenue. But we could still kind of stuck to their guidelines because that was what the money was originally for. So we tried to stay in that realm in the spending we've done. But just wanted to mention that. So we, we are eligible for revenue replacement for any expenses we want to make.
As I recall, the discussion from the last meeting is that the board sent, there was not a vote on it, but a consensus it seemed that they'd like to invest this $416,000 in sort of, in some infrastructure projects that benefit more people in town.
Right.
In just certain specific areas.
And, and I feel like you guys have been responsible with that, you know, trying to, trying to keep it in that mind with all of our expenses, but.
So what we have here is a list of possible ARPA-funded projects.
She's going to roll that through her presentation.
Go ahead.
I'm getting there.
I don't want to get ahead of it, sir.
But anyways, these were just the original uses. Obviously, we don't do health and human services as a municipality, so the second one is more of a county function. We did do the one premium pay you guys allowed back in 2021 for employees, but that is no longer an eligible use, so that's not an option anymore. But like, I'm out there in bold, infrastructure, investment in our water sewer and we don't do broadband. But those are, that was the original guidance and what they initially gave out ARPA funds for. So we got 1.3 million overall so far. Like I said, we've done the premium pay for employees. We purchased the land from Main Spring out of ARPA funds. We've done sidewalk improvements on Maple Street, Philip Street, Harrison Avenue. We did the design engineering work for the water treatment plant, which we are continuing now. The first section of that we did with ARPA funds. And then we did a very small piece of the Clyde Street design from the engineering firm before we got our state ARPA funds for that project. So, so those are where, that's where we've spent our money. So this is our allocation so far. 50% of it of what we've spent thus far or allocated thus far has gone to water and sewer. 1% of it went to fire. That was just the salary portion of the premium pay bonus. And then 49% was general fund expenditures. And that's the dollar amounts that we spent there of our total 870-ish thousand we spent so far. So the leadership team met. Amy asked that we all come up with ideas, what our needs were in our departments, things that we felt like we could, we could use that this would benefit. So everybody came together. We had this list. The leadership team met and we went through each one line by line and talked about them. You can see on your spreadsheet that you've got in front of you, the notes and comments on each one because we went ahead and prioritized which ones we felt like were the highest priority as a group for our perspective from the town. Some of these, it's not that we didn't think they were a high priority as far as needing a project done, but we did feel like we've got a timeline. You know, we've only got a few months that these have to be allocated. Some of these things would have to be bid, they'd have to be advertised. You know, sometimes we run into a situation where we advertise for bids, we don't get those bids, we have to re-advertise. So some of these just weren't feasible with the timeline we have for needing to get this money allocated. So you can see where we prioritize those items. So based on the discussions from the leadership team, our recommendations were spread out between our three funds, between water sewer, general and fire. For sewer, the Wilkie Street sewer line construction, that's a big project. We do have money budgeted in the budget for that project because we knew about it. But if we were to put a portion of the ARPA funds towards the sewer line project there, we could move some of that over to other smaller projects in a water sewer fund that are desperately in repair. And one thing I will say about the Wilkie Street sewer line construction, it was bid properly. All of that was done, so we don't have to worry about needing uniform guideline requirements for the federal funds. It was done, so we know that. For water, we've got replacing the galvanized line on First Fairway and replacing the PVC water line on Ridgefield. Those are both small projects, but they are needs that Bill Bill brought to us that we need. Fire has a generator that needs to be replaced. If I remember correctly, that generator is from 1986. So if the power is to go out at the fire station, the roll-up doors do not function, we couldn't get the trucks out. So that is something we've talked about for a while, the generators are expensive. The fire department has had other priorities with needing fire trucks. So that one, we felt like was a, a good use for ARPA funds because of their need. And then for the general fund, there's switches for computers and I am not IT and I don't know. Justin could speak more if he needed to know. But that $12,000 for switches, that's a need we have for our servers here. So that's going to have to be done regardless whether it's ARPA or we use our line. Heating and air unit at Memorial Park has gone out. That's the way we started the fiscal year. That was not something we budgeted for because we didn't expect it to, but that's an expense we're going to have to incur regardless. And then the alleyway improvements that Amy has. And then the alleyway improvements that Amy has mentioned to you back towards Stewart Street, because that was not something that we could plan for either. So those were the top priorities we felt as a leadership team. That would get money allocated. It would give us a little wiggle room within the water sewer budget to get some of the other smaller things done. We just felt like it would get responsible as far as infrastructure and needs that we had. So we went through that. If you guys agreed with those allocations, then we would be guaranteed, we know we would have this money allocated. We would not be sending anything back to the federal government, which is our goal. But you can see from the final proposed allocations here, that would put the general fund at spending 40% of the total 1.3 million. Water and sewer would have 55% of that total and then the fire department would be spending 5% of the total ARCA allocation. So I'll have you to answer any questions, suggestions?
I'll get you to the, imagine number of my math says a little over.
It is a little over, but the $75,000 for the alleyway improvements, that's a shot in the dark right now. If that was to come in a lot lower, we could, I mean, we'd come back to you guys and the Wilkie Street project is $700,000. So we could always put more money towards it if need be or, you know, something else, but, or we could, you know, pick up another priority on here.
Good work here.
So if the board approves this plan, then the ARCA funds can be encumbered or expended before December 31?
Yes, these are all projects that we can guarantee are in the timeline. And we feel confident. One concern we had was getting a project, allocating it, and then something happened and it not coming through. These are all things that are going to happen. You guys allocate the funds and give us the go-ahead, we're going to get them done. We could run the risk of allocating funds for a project, something happened with the contractor or whatever it may be, and then that project doesn't happen, and then we're going to end up sending that money back if it doesn't get used for that.
There are towns and counties across the state who are not able to go ahead and encumber or expend their ARCA money, and so there's going to be money going back to the feds by the end of this year because they haven't come up with a plan to use that money. And that's just, that's just a shame.
Yeah. There was a lot of talk hoping that the government was going to extend the deadline, but I don't believe they're going to. We've not received any indication of that. So I feel strongly that we should get it allocated and go ahead and make some of it while we got it.
Do these have to be parsed out on their own or can they be done, voted on?
They can be voted on together because it's just the allocation in accordance with the priorities set by the leadership team.
At this point in time, this is a reasonable estimate.
If, if you guys did wish to go this route and spend the remaining $416,000 on these priorities, I would bring a budget and then go back to you at the next board meeting with the specifics because I, with ARCA funds, I feel more comfortable having it specific to each project and each fund the way it needs to be.
Mr. Plage of the board?
I'm ready to make a motion that we...
Mr. Cullen?
The remaining ARCA funds as outlined in these recommendations.
I'll make the motion. Motion made in second. Mr. Lewis, in discussion. Hearing not all those prepared motions, please signify by raising your hand. Any opposed, if I like the sign, the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Appreciate you and the leadership team's work on putting all this together because it happened by itself.
No, no, we appreciate you guys so much.
Under general statute 143-3, 1811a5, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
You have a motion in the second? You have an item for the council to discuss before we go into closed session? Go. What time do you think it'll run, it'll take?
Long for our closed session, yes, to get it.
I just don't want to keep our staff tied up any longer than we need to, but if you want, if, you have something to go with?
Yeah, I wanted to give an update on what's going on up in Cherry Street and that we're doing, first of all.
On Cherry Street? You want me to suggest or give an update on that?
Yeah, so also the house, Jordan talked about the house on Hillside being condemned. The tower's been removed. The occupant is still there. They have proceeded to steal the power from neighbors. So PD's been addressing that. That's kind of where we're at. They're not getting any cooperation pretty much from them. So the other stuff we've been talking about with taxes is afterlife is the best avenue for it.
Is demolition not an option at all? You wouldn't want to do a summary demolition where you just went in and bulldozed it and said, okay, because this was a, you know, a huge problem, because then you, you've got potential takings, claims, and just it's a mess. I agree. I think when it can get to a foreclosure sale and, you know, when you took steps down the road of one kind of foreclosure method, the county stepped up all of a sudden and said, no, we'll do it. We're on board as a plaintiff, a co-plaintiff, we're willing to do that. We're, we're taking the steps appropriately to get it sold so that whoever ends up buying that foreclosure can, can do that.
But some people, people can still, we feel we live in that. Why are they still there then?
Well, that's, you shouldn't be. That's something that Chief Holland and I have been working on and talking about a bit. I mean, they're in violation of an ordinance and it's a misdemeanor in the state law to occupy as well, which has been declared by ordinance to be. Frankly, the point that I'm wanting to talk to Chief about and hang around and prevent it, Chief, because we got word from magistrates who said, if I understood right, and they didn't say it to me, what I heard they said was, that's all civil. It ain't, because there's a statute and it says it's a, it's a misdemeanor to occupy as well. So we're working on it.
And the RV that was blocking the line of sight, is it still there?
It's still there, but we're, it's on the to-do list. I was hoping to get that pretty soon. Where do I have to just get a warrant and go get it?
We not just run a backhoe up there or something and just push it back enough where it's not causing a hazard for, for view hazard?
You'd still have to have a warrant to go on there and do something like that, so...
Can we get a warrant?
What, Rita?
What was that?
I said, can we get a warrant?
Oh, yeah, we can get it. Well, I have to do administrative warrant. My, I, our office would have to do it. PD cannot do administrative warrants, but I've never had any issues in the past getting those. We'll do, good new, I have a new co-직원 person to tackle, so she knows how to do these in future.
Okay, who else? I have a second item.
All right.
I wanted to reiterate what Councilman Lewis said about Main Street and what a, what a shame that is with us putting all the money that we're putting into the beautification of downtown, the work that our staff is doing to have a roadway like that. I think it would be good for this board to, to, it's in the form of a letter adopted by the council or a resolution or something to the...
I would like to contact our highway commissioner for the 14th commission to see what they can do and if possible, get them to come and discuss it with the board in person.
I would like that. I think their leadership ought to be here and...
I think we need somebody who can give us an answer and instead of transferring emails and snail mail and so forth, I'd like to have someone come and, and see for themselves what the situation is and tell us what can be done about it before 2028.
And have them drive down Main Street in either my truck or Michael's truck.
They're rolling the best, yeah.
Would the, would the real juice not come from Kevin and Carl?
Well, it really falls under Department of Transportation, which falls under the, under the governor's office. And then, and, and the, the, the highway commissioner for our district can do a lot of things if we ask them, but if we don't ask them, they won't do anything. So I'd like to, I'd like to get them and I'm sure that Wanda, our district engineer, would be happy to come. And, and she, she's been very, very active in trying to support projects within our region. And so if we can't get the highway commissioner, maybe we'll get the district engineer to come. Okay? Thank you, Mr. Goffey. Appreciate those two items. And now, is there a motion concerning going to closed session for the real property, for the, for the discussion of acquisition of property, purchase, option, exchange, or lease?
Motion.
Motion made in second. In discussion. Hearing not all those prepared motions, signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. We're now in closed session.
Can I participate in the closed session?
Yes.
Don't tie me off.
Thank you all for watching. I'm going to have to shut it down. And if they do anything after the meeting, I'm going to leave my equipment set up so I can handle it then. Thank you all very much.